Moving on on the agenda, I'm now absolutely delighted to welcome Hymara Sultan, who is consultant in public health at Birmingham City Council. Hymara, thank you very much for joining us today. I will just hand over to you and let you introduce yourself and your presentation.
Thank you. Thanks, Julia. And a big thank you to Celia as well for allowing me to come and talk to you guys today. Can I just check you can hear me okay? Okay, fab. Thank you. So yeah, so my name's Hymara Sultan, as Julia just introduced me. And so I am a consultant in public health here in Birmingham and for our city council. And I also spend, I've spent half my time as a consultant in public health and I spend the other half of my time as a research fellow with the University of Birmingham. And as part of that, I have just submitted an application for a PhD to look at the value of green spaces. So all this kind of work is really, really important and of great interest to me. So if I could just move on to my first slide, please. Fab. So I wanted to talk to you about environmental justice and how we as a local authority have tried to measure that in an attempt really to help that the city in its broadest sense understand where some of our challenges are in terms of green spaces, where we don't have enough of it, where the quality isn't good enough. And then not only just to kind of talk about the problem, but then how do we take that understanding? How do we come up with solutions, interventions? And then how, how do we actually change things for those people, those residents who are suffering from issues around not having enough green space in their local areas? So I'll move on to my next slide, please. Celia, thank you. I think it is Celia sharing. I apologize if it's not. Just yeah, do shout out somebody else. So Birmingham, I'm sure most people know that Birmingham is quite a large city, but what most people don't actually know is that we are the largest local authority in Western Europe. So we've got a population of over one point one million residents. And also that our one city is divided up into sixty nine separate electoral wards. So that in itself just gives you an idea of just, just how big Birmingham is. Just as an example, my, my very first consultant in public health job was in a much, much smaller city in Derby. That was around fifteen wards, possibly seventeen wards from memory. So that the scale in Birmingham is, is really, really quite, quite a lot bigger. We are, we are a lot, as I said, you know, we're a live city and we're also a growing city as well. So there is a lot of development, a lot of growth occurring. But that is all couched within this idea and desire to make sure that that growth is fairer as well, so that people have a just experience in terms of where they live, the air quality that they are exposed to in relation to net zero as well. And being a public health consultant, one of the main things that I'm concerned with in my day to day job is really about how do we maximize the help from the populations that we are serving. So, and also I couldn't be doing public health justice without mentioning inequalities. We know that those areas that live in the most deprivation suffer some of the worst half inequalities. A whole host of issues. And so, so that's the challenge that we face in Birmingham. And, and I really, I guess, what I'll be showing, I'll be talking to you about environmental justice is how we're tackling some of, some of these challenges that I've just outlined. Next slide, please, Celia. Okay, so one of the most basic measures that we use in public health is the index of multiple deprivation. It's used across pretty much every local authority in every public health department. And it's, it's a core measure really in terms of helping to understand how, how much inequality that there might be within a certain population or a certain demographic. And when you look at the actual domains that are made up within this index, you know, really, really important ones that are very much related to health. So things like income, like employment, education and skills. But when you look at actual the, the living environment, which is one of the domains that the IMD is made up of, it looks at things again, which, which are important. It looks at quality of housing, it looks at air quality, it looks at road traffic accidents. But one of the things, it doesn't really, this, this measure for IMD doesn't really look at green space. It doesn't look at urban heat island or flood risk, all the things that are really important in terms of how people experience their, their surroundings and, and live, live their day to day life. So with this kind of, kind of glaring gap, this is what's really prompted our desire in Birmingham to think about environmental justice. Next slide, please, Celia. So this idea of environmental justice, it's, it's not new, definitely not in other parts of the world. So in places like Berlin and Germany and especially in Virginia, USA, the environmental justice has been, has been looked at, has been measured, has been implemented across various communities of people who are living in those places. But Birmingham is the first local authority within the UK that we're aware of to, to develop our own measure of environmental justice. And the way in which we've tackled this, the whole, the whole point of this index is to allow it to be relatively easy to calculate. So it uses a lot of open source data. Probably the only thing that isn't open source is the excess years of life lost. And that is generally any manager intelligence team within a public health department within a local authority would be able to calculate that for you as a, as a local authority. For access to green spaces, so areas that we have, you know, at least two hectares of green space per kilometer. And we've, we've used that because that is a specific target within our own local Birmingham Development Plan. We've looked at whether an area is a flood risk, whether it has an urban heat island effect. We've looked at also excess years of life lost. And even though I've started off by saying that IMD isn't, isn't perfect, it's still a really important way of measuring how, you know, how, how well a place is. So we've got five indicators and these generally, we, we use a software package called ArcGIS. So again, most local authorities have some, have a team who understand geographic information systems and GIS and able to do, we're a bit able to do this work for you. And the idea is that we basically for each indicator calculated a score, added it up. And essentially, the higher the score, the worse the environmental justice is for that area. So if we go to the next slide, please, Celia. And here we have a map of Birmingham. So what you'll see is kind of around the edges, well, kind of around the north and the southern areas of the city, generally the colours are kind of green and yellow. That's generally quite good in terms of environmental justice. So these areas generally have more green space. People are living in healthier environments. Not really living in an area where there's a high risk of flood or urban heat island effect. But what you see really kind of, it really kind of smacks, kind of really smacks you really quite hard in the face is this central area that is all red. And these are the parts of Birmingham, this could be a map of obesity for the city, it could be a map of educational achievement. It could be a map of hospital admissions for cardiovascular disease. We know that issues in our populations and our communities cluster. They don't just happen in, you know, in isolation. And these particular areas that are red, and they suffer with kind of the least amount of green space for the population living there. Generally, the quality of that green space is not very good. They're living in areas because of not enough green space and it's a lot of concrete. It's a flood risk. And also because it isn't much tree canopy either, it's also an urban heat island effect as well. So all these factors that are coming in means that the experience of these people is not particularly just compared to those living in more of the north of the city for those in the south. And as you can see from this kind of, this key, one of the worst areas is Borsal Heath, that a score of point four three. And it varies as much as down to kind of point one, two, around one of our wards in the north in Sutton. And next slide, please, Celia. I put, I put this, this slide in just to kind of, I guess, remind us that we, we did this piece of work as a, as a local authority because we wanted to make people's lives better, essentially. And the people's lives we're trying to make better are very used to not expecting very much, unfortunately. So this has been a whole issue of trust and building trust in those communities where we're trying to make some changes, where they might have been promised before that something is going to happen and then for whatever reason it hasn't happened and so forth. So when we've gone out to speak to some of those communities in those red wards and said, you know, the reason we're here talking to you is because we want to make your park better. That has happened over quite a lot of conversations. So yeah, that's the reason that that slide is there. Next slide, please. Okay, so we've got this fantastic map. It paints a very, very clear picture of what the issues are in Birmingham. So we could have left it there and said, right, we've done this piece of work, tweet is really interesting. But of course, we're, we're in the business of making changes and we're in the business of trying to make things better for, for people who aren't experiencing the best quality of life. So one of the things that we did was we, we used this map to be kind of socialize the idea of environmental justice. That every single person we showed it to in, in our, in our council, I think I counted about thirty three different meetings where I took it to. They all could understand really clearly that we have a big problem in Birmingham around inequity of access in terms of green space and what that then means for people living in those areas. So we've taken this map and used it to develop our City of Nature Plan, which is over the next twenty five years. And Cabinet back in last February agreed that they would support the plan and support its, its implementation. So what is the idea behind this plan? It's quite simple, really. A, we want to improve the quality of existing green spaces, starting off in our red wards, and also increase the quantity of green space as well. Some of you might know that Birmingham is known as a place of a thousand trades. We have roughly six hundred green spaces, not, not just parks, well, more than just parks. And the ambition is to get to a city of a thousand green spaces as well. As part of this, we worked with our planning colleagues who look after our community infrastructure levy fund. So our SIL, and we were able to secure half a million pounds of that budget to be able to support the work within our City of Nature Plan. Because Birmingham is so big and we've never done this before, we wanted to try to improve the quality of our parks and start to think about how we increase the amount of green space and, and in these red areas by focusing on one specific ward, this was in Highgate. For those of you who might know Birmingham or have been before, that's kind of the area of, around Diggth, which is really close to the city centre. It's also a place of strategic importance, this particular ward. We have a huge project around developing the inclusive growth within East Birmingham. That in itself is, has a population of about two hundred and seventy thousand people, which is the size of most of our local authorities. Once we've piloted an approach within Borsy and Highgate, the idea was we then moved to five other wards, Neachel's Castle Vale, Gravelly Hills, Bartlett, Borsal Heath East and Borsal Heath West. And when you, if you do go back to the slides, then on, on the map, you'll see that these areas are all connected geographically as well. So we've not just chosen wards that I just read, but, but they're, they're red and they're also geographically connected because going back to the point of trying to increase the amount of green space, we wanted to be able to connect up these green spaces throughout these, these six wards as well. So next slide, please. So there are five parks within Borsy and Highgate. So they're kind of, you can see them in green and you can see how small they are and how few there are in this particular ward. As part of the City of Nature work that we did, we also developed our own standard for quality of green space. And this, we, we call this our, our future park standard. We were able to audit all the parks in Borsy and Highgate. And we actually did this across thirty three parks and those six priority wards. And what this audit allowed us to do was identify the interventions that were needed to be able to bring the park up to what we expected the future standard to, to be. So it could have been something as simple as notice boards. Big part of the work that I did when I first started in Bensley Council, leading our Future Parks Accelerator Programme, which is funded by the National Trust and National Heritage Lottery Fund, was for people to want to use a park or to know that a park exists, they, they need something to tell them that. So none of these five parks had had notice boards. And that was a really simple fix for us to be able to, to sort out. We were able to work with small organisations who were able to apply for micro funds and match them with the funding from the City Council as well to do some work in these particular five wards. And what was also really important was we developed a community asset in these parks. So we were able to activate these parks, get local people engaged. We've now nearly got a Friends of Park group within Borsy and Highgate, which has never happened before. And most recently, we had over a hundred families turn up for a, for a, for an event in, in, in one of these five parks as well, which again has never happened before. So we've taken this particular ward in Birmingham, put some resource into it based on the work of Environmental Justice Map, and then been able to undertake some interventions, secured some funding and then actually see the differences that are actually being made. And next slide, please. So in terms of what's next, we've had some really, really good learning in terms of what Borsy and Highgate has achieved. And we are moving on to other wards. So Neachel's Ward is next. All these wards are quite different in terms of demographic makeup, so, and also what already exists in terms of community infrastructure. So not all the learning from Borsy and Highgate will apply, but we've, we've learnt lots from, from this particular pilot to be able to apply elsewhere. We're also in the process of completing a master plan for looking at these six wards in an interconnected way, identifying a lot other ways, which not only, not only that's about improving the quality of the green space, this is actually about increasing the quantity of green space as well. So identifying those areas of the, of the ward where, for instance, it might be disused car parks or disused factories. Could we turn them into, into a green space? And how would we do that? How much would it cost? Who would we need to speak to? Who's the, who's the owner of the land and so forth? Just next slide, please, Celia. Just to say, we've had a fantastic opportunity and relationship with Town and Country Planning here, especially the editor of your journal, Town and Country Planning Journal, Nick Matthews, who's been fantastic and has supported us to publish this piece of work within the TCP Journal. So a link is there for anybody who wants to read about how we've developed the Environmental Justice Map in detail. If anybody has, is listening to this and is thinking, do you know what, we, we really would like to try and do this in our local authority. That's why we've, we've published it, is because we want people to be able to take a relatively simple approach and use a very evidence-based way to then help make some changes in your own areas where there's, you know, where there's, where there's highest need. On here is also a link about the actual Future Parks Standard as well, explaining what it is, how we've developed it and how we've carried out the audits as well. And the next slide is just, yeah, this is just a summary of who was behind the paper being authored in TCP Journal. It was quite a cross collaboration of people across different, different parts of our Birmingham system. And any questions? We're super happy to answer them. And also very happy to be contacted if later on if anybody has any further thoughts or, or wants to know a bit more about what we've done. And I will pop those links as well into the chat here as well, folks. Thank you very much.
Hymara, that, that was just, that, that was just amazing. Thank you so much. It's really, really impressive.
Thank you.
I'm sure there will be lots of comments and thoughts, but yeah, brilliant work. Alan, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. Fantastic presentation. And yeah, what better than a city like Birmingham with, as you say, six hundred, is it, existing parks already? I mean, that's a, that's a really ambitious target. But it's very much needed, is it? In, in the sense that you've proven through the data that although you've got six hundred fantastic parks, they're not necessarily in the right place. My question really was a bit, was about funding. I mean, brilliant for, for being entrepreneurial and sort of obviously going where the money is or finding out, tracking where the money is. Just, just as general comment really, I mean, given your particular area of, of health, public health, do you in the future see more and more of this sort of activity being funded from not necessarily local authority budgets, but from health budgets?
I, I would, I would love to see that happen. That might not answer your question, do I think it will happen? It definitely is. There were so many more conversations are now happening, I would say, Alan, about the role that parks have in terms of health and wellbeing. And so, so yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm a public health consultant. I was recruited specifically to win our Future Parks Programme. And yes, so we're starting to see health recognise that parks are important. And especially given the situation the local authorities are in right now in terms of budgets, section one one four notices as well that are now kind of becoming more and more commonplace. There's absolutely going to be a requirement for, not, not just, I would say, funds from other statutory kind of organisations, other parts of the system, but also thinking about kind of being a bit, I think, being a bit more creative and perhaps a bit less, a bit less risk averse in terms of where we accept money coming from. I know commercialization can be quite a dirty word in the world of parks. And I, I don't think we need to turn every park into like a fun fair for it to be commercialized. But there's definitely, definitely more that we could be doing to help raise the funds to be able to, to support the parks that we know can do so much for people's health and wellbeing.
Thank you very much indeed and all the best with it. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think our next question comes from Mike Savage. Mike, over to you.
Hi, Hymara. It's very interesting. In terms of the Environmental Justice Map, and maybe all of this is in the, the paper you've linked to, so more than happy that, just to be referred back to that. But I'm quite interested to know, obviously that is quite sensitive to which factors you choose.
Oh, absolutely.
So it's, it's how they were selected and whether any weighting was applied and how you arrived at the weighting.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we've considered all of this, Michael. So in all honesty, the ones that we chose were the ones that were easiest to access because I think what we were trying, if I take my academic hat off, I kind of wear half, half of the time in the week. And this is actually quite a serious point. We really struggled to get this paper published in what you might kind of, kind of perhaps think of as a, not that TCP Journal isn't academic. I don't think that at all. Julia and Celia said, please, and Nick, you know, just an amazing, amazing person to work with. But some, some more academic journals were just really just transfixed on, on the really kind of nitty gritty of the development of the index, rather than understanding that this was actually something quite simple. And it had to be simple if we were going to get it done in a local, if we're going to get it done in a local authority space. Just because if we, if we had to kind of get permission to see, get data from various other sources or what have you, it just would have taken us way, way, way too long. So, but I think what TCP Journal saw was that actually the application of this, yes, it's not perfect, but, and actually, even though the score has an absolute value, what's more important is the relative difference between the highest score and the lowest score, rather than actually what, what it is, if that makes sense, Michael. So, so with all that in mind, I think, yeah, we, we, we went with factors that we knew, for instance, weren't, indicators that weren't in the current IMD. So access to green space, urban heat island, flood risk. We knew that IMD was, even though flawed, you know, but still very, very much respected. And kind of, you know, I think we would have been challenged, why is that not in there, to be honest, given it's used all across, kind of, you know, the UK. And, and the only other thing, I think from my public health perspective, we wanted this to speak to the world of health as well. So, so just as an example, I think to Alan as well, based on this EJ map, so public health funding was, was used to support some interventions in those target wards as well. So because we were able to use some public health data in that, in that map. So, so hope that answers the first bit of your question, Michael. Second bit about weighting. I'm denared with this. We toyed with it, we tried to put it in. And then we were kind of like, well, why is one more important than the other? So we went back to the first kind of, kind of, you know, kind of, kind of back to basics and first principles. We want to keep this as simple as possible. So let's just, let's just keep everything with the same weighting. But, but yeah, so when you, when you kind of, when people start to ask questions about it, then they start to realise how simple it actually is. And so, but the reason it was simple was that people could actually go ahead and just go ahead and repeat it. And we're confident that people could actually do that, I think, with this. So.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. We did something very similar in, in Manchester City Centre about ten years ago with Red Rose Forest, now City of Trees. And, and, and what we established there was a very basic weighting framework. But just by making it completely open, isn't it? And saying, look, this isn't, we're not saying we've got it right, but it's the first, it's the first pass. And we can, we can refine going forwards.
And I think we could have spent more and more time refining it and never getting to the action possibly as well. So, which, you know.
Sorry to butt in, we've got lots of questions and we've still got another speaker. So I'd like to put the questions and if we can have quick questions and quick answers and then everyone can go and read the paper and find out more. I think Carrie was next with a question. Carrie, do you want to go ahead?
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. That, that was really, really insightful, super clever, really helpful. And having worked on the environmental health side myself, I can see the way you've done this synthesis is just really, really clever. So I just really wanted to kind of reflect on, I've been in Birmingham myself on Monday and Tuesday this week. And we were looking at some of our older projects that we were involved with in your greener areas, which were in a terrible state. Those were trees that we planted seven years ago and they were like, been stripped and they were rotting, which was a separate issue in itself in terms of are we planting in the right places? What's the sustainability of some of those projects that, that, that we've been involved with? But I guess my, my question was, what's the, what's the best entry point to now have a conversation about where organisations like Trees for Cities can help, you know, because we can, obviously you're doing community engagement, we can do community engagement, we've got a good track record of that. We can help look at grants, we can align for corporate funding. But yeah, so what's, I'm really excited to get involved and I'd just quite like to know what the entry point is to have the next conversation.
I would say get in touch with me, Carrie, if that's okay, because this could be quite a long conversation. Yeah, yeah, absolutely happy to talk more on that.
Brilliant. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Brilliant. That's what these meetings are all about. Fantastic. I think the next question was from Ilana Bada.
Thank you. And thanks, Hymara. That was really fantastic seeing this. We've, we've got a lot of interesting work going on up here on a Scottish government level that we're involved with on the human right to a healthy environment, which is really relevant to what you were talking about as well. So fantastic to see the work that you guys have been doing. And I'll definitely be keeping tabs on it and probably getting in touch at some point. But I was quite curious, going back to the data indicators that you're using, if, if funding and if barriers to data weren't a problem, what would you like to be able to use to incorporate into your index?
Oh, wow. I think we probably, we might have probably used a lot more health data, I think. Ilana? Excess years life lost is, so it's, it's quite, it's quite far reaching and it doesn't really pinpoint what the issues are in terms of the health issues that that population is facing, if that makes sense. And going back to Alan's point, we could probably have a lot more of a targeted conversation with, say, health organisations like ENITIS England or Integrative Care Systems about why they would want to be parting with some of their budget to support parks and green spaces as well. So never been asked that, but definitely. So never been asked that, but definitely I think we'd have far more specific health health data. Although it doesn't exist, but it's just really, really hard to to kind of get it at the right kind of level and so forth. Um, yeah.
Right. I had to move things on quickly, um, because we haven't got the huge amount of time. So Cathy, your question, quick fire question and quick answer.
Yep. Thanks, Hamera. Just a quick question around um the community engagement piece. Obviously, you're dealing with a lot of data and and things like that. But what, you know, was there, what level of community engagement was there in terms of talking to local people? And what was their responses in terms of, were they happy to be engaged in this as as a process?
So we worked with a local organisation, Birmingham Environment Studies Forum, whose job it was essentially to support existing Friends of Park groups. They changed their their tack since working with us on this programme and actually realised that those Friends of Park groups only exist in those green wards where there's a resource waiting for them to happen. So we need to, in order to create those kind of new Friends of Park groups, we actually got to activate the parks. So they actually employed with funding and support from us and then they later got funding from elsewhere as well to continue it. They had, we had a person that was in the park, day in, day out, all those five parks, knocking on doors, um, knocking on community centres, talking to people. And that that happened every, every year, you know, on a regular basis. And then she would set up small activities, litter picks, um walks and so forth. And slowly, slowly, it kind of grew, Cathy, and to the point, and then a hundred families turned up to a family event, which we thought never in a million years was going to happen, but it actually did. So. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jane, your question.
Sorry. And thanks. Really fantastic piece of work and ongoing work. And um we're picking up that local authorities would really like to share their good practice. Um, and others are very interested in examples like Birmingham. They they seem to want lists of checklists and bullets. And I wondered if I could um please go through your your papers and just pull out what I think are the the key bullets and present those and ask if you could kindly review them and we'll share them with other local authorities as part of our guidance.
Absolutely, Jane. Very happy to do that.
Thank you very much. Cheers.
Brilliant. That that's really encouraging. Thank you so much, Hamera. And I think I'll invite you back in a couple of years or something to see how it's all going. Brilliant.
Okay, thank you, everybody.